All right, Joyce, you call the little force, please.
Councilmember Sevier.
Present.
Councilmember Fox.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Mayor Durham.
Present.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
And we have the four.
Our with the quorum present, we'll call this meeting to order. We'll start our meeting with a word of prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Chad, if you will lead us in the word of prayer. And Robin, if you will lead us in the pledge of accords. Remember Terry Gray, one of our fellow workers, who had an accident this week.
Let's pray together. Father, we do thank you for this day. And Father, we thank you for life today. And Father, I pray and thank you that as we celebrate this time of season, that Father, the greatest gift of all is the fact that you gave us your Son, so that we may have life and life eternal. And I thank you for that this day. Father, I do pray for Terry today. I pray that, Father, thank you that surgery went well yesterday. And I pray that your continued blessing and healing upon his body, and you bless him this day. I pray for all that we do this day, that we do it with wisdom. We do it for the betterment of this community. And that would be our God and our God alone. We love you this day, and we praise you. Father, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, gentlemen, in front of you, you got a copy of the minutes of the previous meeting. If there's no additions, changes, or deletions, I'll hear a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
All right, I got a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing no discussion, if you're in favor of approving the minutes, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and minutes are approved. Okay. Got a few housecleaning announcements to make here. Office of E closed on December 23rd and the 26th, so that's Friday and Monday. And also January 2nd for New Year's holiday. So Friday's garbage carts will be picked up on Friday. And Monday's garbage carts will be picked up on Thursday. So Friday's gonna stay the same, but if garbage is picked up on Monday, it'll be picked up on Thursday. I do have a retirement award. I'm gonna have two today, but since Terry had an accident, we're gonna hold off on his a little bit. But Kathy Ryan is here. Kathy, come up here. Kathy, you're one of those folks that just do your job, and you pretty much stay hidden from sight, but you do a great job.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You've been here as long as I've been here.
Right.
It's an honor to have worked with you all these years, and your faithful service to the police department. And I've got this retirement award. You're gonna end the year with a bang, aren't you?
That's right.
It's a great Christmas gift. So this is a... I can't read this.
You're mine.
I'm sorry. This is from the office of the mayor. Kathy Ryan has hereby presented this retirement award for outstanding performance and faithful service to the board of mayor and council, and the citizens of the city of Lawrenceburg through your dedicated service in the Lawrenceburg Police Department. Thank you for over 14 years of service on this 31st day of December, 2016. Congratulations on your retirement. Give me a... Terry, come up here with us. Chief, come up here with us. And anybody that wants to come up, come on with coworkers.
Mayor, let me do this first, so you can hear first.
Yeah.
Okay. Tilt this back a little bit. Now, Mayor, he won't take it back.
I'm holding on.
Just a little higher. Just a little higher. There you go. Okay, it's fine. How many fans out here?
Hey, how's this?
Oh, happy fun. I got that too. Okay. All right. Okay. Hold on, one more thing you gotta get in.
He's gotta get it out of her eyes now.
Show business is rough, ain't it?
It is.
Okay, Mayor, you can smile this time. Okay. All right, now bring all your...
All right. Come on, Terry. Yeah, absolutely.
Scrunch up, pat you. That's as good as shoes. I thought I was... All right. That's right. Okay. About two more with me today. One, two. How about one more? Okay, okay. Y'all are gone.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, see you right up front, Gary Ryan.
All right.
All right. Chris, I'll turn the table over to you for your business.
Thank you. First, I'd like to congratulate a couple of employees. I'd like to congratulate Chris Bryant, our codes department, for passing the Commercial Plumbing Inspector's Certification. Chris is our most recent addition to the codes department. And having his commercial plumbing inspection will certainly help us as we go forward. I'd also like to congratulate Tina Sal on completion of the SSH certificate. That is a Specialist in Safety and Health. That encompasses over 100 hours, I think, of classroom work and helps with our OSHA and our safety standards. I'd also like to thank her for that and congratulate her on that as well. Also, report on the fire department. Last week, we were down to one engine, one frontline engine. We had to borrow equipment from New Prospect and Murfisboro. One of those is an engine that was under repair, and we had another one that went down. I'd like to thank New Prospect Fire Department for loaning us an engine till we could take care of that problem. And also recognizing that the state fire marshal has presented Chief Moore an award for the 100 for 100 program, giving out fire smoke detectors. We still have a few of those available as well. If Chief Moore wants to inform us on how anybody is in need of a smoke detector, can participate in that program.
We'd like to, Chris, to introduce you to Columbia. I was asked about a town. Kevin Beffer went up and received the plaque from the state fire marshal's office on our behalf, the 100 for 100 program. And this what this is, is we put out over 100 smoke detectors in one setting with the help of Kaufman's baseball team last year. And we're recognized for that along with some other departments across the state. We do have smoke detectors now at the fire department. You know, with the fire deaths we've had in the last month, we've had over seven children under the age of 10 killed in the state of Tennessee in the last, within the last month in fire deaths, not counting adults. You know, we really don't want that to happen anywhere in Tennessee. We especially don't want it to happen here in Lawrenceburg, Lawrence County. So if you live in the sea limits of Lawrenceburg, we have smoke detectors at the fire department. If you will call the fire department at 762-9046, they'll answer the questions. We'll be able to come out and put you a smoke detector up, check your smoke detector. We just wanna make sure you're safe through the holidays and the rest of your life. Thank you.
And Doug Edwards is going to present a department manager report this morning.
Good morning. First of all, the main reason that I'm up here today is on behalf of the employees. Several of them have asked me to come forward. And thank you for all the initiatives and actions that have been taken by the mayor and council in the last year to improve the lives of the employees. And we just wanted to say thank you. And I'll tell you, more than one came to me and asked me to express this publicly to the mayor and council. So, employees, let's give them my hand. Good things to thank them for. That is for a much-needed pay raise that we had this year, for longevity pay, and also for keeping the health insurance rates, which went up quite a bit, to keep them from affecting the employees. And we know there were a lot of decisions that were not easy, but you made some tough calls and helped the employees this year. And so we greatly appreciate that. While I'm up here, Chris asked me if I would just share a few statistics on some things that are going on in the risk management and safety arena, as well as the employees. I'll start out with the insurance part, with the pool, who handles our liability, workers' comp, and property. And I can say without reservation that all three of them are showing a trending improvement. The graphs, as far as the losses go, they all go from the upper left to the lower right, which, if you're looking for good trends, that's a decreasing trend. And we can see that in liability claims... Well, just this year, we've only had two liability claims. And typical claims in past years would have been up in the teens. And so, and of course, the dollar losses are going down with this, too. You know, unfortunately, we've got to stop some... Right now, we're at the point where the city employees and just within the city itself, we're not experiencing a lot of liability claims, but we're having some of what I would frankly consider fraudulent claims by outsiders who are trying to sue the city to get money. Some, several trip and fall cases. And I've been talking to our legislators about that, because that is just not right. The workers' comp, again, that's steadily, that's in a decreasing trend. And we're seeing the dollar amount of these claims go down. The biggest problem that we have probably in workers' comp right now, as far as serious injuries go, are usually related to lifting in some manner. And it's hurting the back. And so we see a problem with lifting in conjunction with maybe twisting at the same time that you're lifting, and it hurts your back, and those tend to be expensive. One really good trend that we've seen in the police department is that we're not getting our police officers hurt as much from the criminals fighting them when they're trying to be arrested. The tasers have taken care of that pretty well. And when somebody sees that red dot on their body, they're not as inclined to resist arrest. And so that has resulted in saving our police officers from a lot of injuries, which is great. On the property claims, in 2015, last year, we had zero property claims. And unfortunately, we had one just the other day, which kind of dinged our record, but that's just one. And property claims are our best category. They're doing very well. So Tina's be commended for her efforts as a safety director. And the employees are to be credited because of their study. There's been a lot of training in every department. There is, we see more training that is going on, and we're emphasizing that more. And a better-trained employee is a safer employee. And they are, they're making that work. Now, for a few, just a few fun statistics, and I'll sit down. In terms of employees, currently, we have 131 employees. That is today. Now, that will change after the first of the year. We may add one or two more. The average age of our employees is 45 years old. The age range, and I won't name any names, but the youngest employee is 20 years old, and the oldest employee is 69. And the average years of service is 13 years of service at this point. One trend that we're seeing in this is we've done a lot of hiring this year. And it amazes even me, and I've been doing every hire, but we hired 17 employees this last year, 17. You compare that to 2012, where we hired one employee that year. And in previous years, we've hired a handful, maybe four or five. But this last year, we've hired 17. And the department managers all realize that even though we're benefiting from getting that new blood in here, we are also not benefiting from losing all of that veteran knowledge that is walking out the door. And we're gonna have to be more cognizant of the fact that we need to train some of these new employees, because they're not gonna know what happened to Jim or Joe 10 years ago, where that was a terrible accident, or something, or just in the means of doing the job. We're gonna have to do, you know, be more thoughtful that they haven't been around here, and they need to be immersed in our culture and brought along by those who are getting ready to retire. So we're doing some mentorship of those new people. I think, and it hasn't just been concentrated at any one department. I think every single department, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Chris, but I think every single department has seen new people come into their department this year. So it's really going across the board. We've got new people in every department. And then on the retirees, we have 72 retirees right now. Their average age is 69. And they range in age from 35 to 88 years old. So just a few HR statistics that I thought I'd throw your way. And again, we thank you, and we wish you all a happy holiday season.
Somehow I missed that 35-year-old retirement.
Mayor, I had one question before we leave this. I wanted to ask Tina or Doug, the back injury situation. Do any of our guys wear those back braces or back belt?
Well, sometimes they have some available.
Is that something that we might look into? I know back when I was in the, we were dealing, in my previous employment, we had, our employees wore those back belts after we had several back issues, and that really helped us. I don't know if that's something...
We have tried to look at mechanical devices for the fire department in order to lift people. You know, people are getting bigger, and we're having to lift bigger bodies. You lift a 300 or 400-pound person, and...
Right.
But sometimes in the confined spaces, they can't get those devices in there, and they just have to get them out, and, you know, manhandle them, get them out of there, get them down a staircase, or whatever they have to do. And that is, that's a real problem. We've also talked to the ambulance service. I think we've even thought about the idea of, hey, if we purchased, you know, more advanced...
Is it our job, Terry, to pick those individuals up, or is it the ambulance truck?
It's the job of the Lawrenceburg heavy lifting team, isn't it?
We do lift a lot. It seems like we lift, Jake could tell, and Tyler could tell you better than I could, but it seems like we do lift a majority. And we've even thought about the idea of, what if we bought the equipment for the ambulance service? Would it save us more money and backs, you know, in the city to do that than it, you know, than to keep doing business the way we're doing it? So that is, you know, that's one thing. But, you know, you even, you have police officers that are, sometimes they hurt their backs. You have DPW workers. And of course, we do a lot of education on proper lifting techniques. But sometimes they just try to lift more than the body will stand, and their backs give out. But we are looking at devices to try to make it easier and to avoid those costly injuries.
Chris, you got any more business?
That's all.
Okay. All right. So we'll move down. There's no old business on the table, so we'll move down to new business, legal issues. Mr. Betts, I'll turn the table over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got several ordinances this morning dealing with amendments to the zoning ordinance. And we've done them separately for each ordinance, so we'll be able to find those for future reference. First one is ordinance 1187, an ordinance to amend ordinance 789 entitled zoning ordinance of the city of Lawrenceburg. This is to amend section 5.071, light industrial district dimensional regulations and height requirements. Change the height limitation from 45 feet to 72 feet. All these ordinances are based on recommendation from the planning commission. And this one is here for first reading today.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve. And a second. Any discussion on this this time? Seeing no discussion, if you're in favor of orders number 1187, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and ordinance number 1187 moves to second reading.
Next, gentlemen, 1188, ordinance to amend ordinance 789 entitled zoning ordinance. This is to change section 5.072, Roman numeral 1, to general industrial district to deal with height requirements. Current regulation's 45 feet, and we're changing that to 72 feet in height. That is allowable. That's for first reading.
What's your pleasure on this ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if you're in favor of orders number 1188, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and ordinance number 1188 moves to second reading.
Ordinance 1189, an ordinance to amend 789 entitled zoning ordinance of the city of Lawrenceburg. This is to change section 5.061, C1 central business district dimensional regulations landscaping provisions. Current regulation calls for 10% of the lot area to be landscaped. The change is if an existing parcel is legal nonconforming lot with respect to the minimum size requirements, a 10-foot landscape strip may be reduced by half. That's for first reading today.
Got a motion to approve.
Second.
I got a second. Any discussion on this?
Well, I understand the purpose of that, but now 10 feet's not a whole lot of room either. So...
It's to do away with the requirement of having to go to the zoning board of appeals every time. There's lots of nonconforming lots that are grandfathered in in the city of Lawrenceburg, councilman.
Okay.
Like I say, this is based on recommendation of the planning commission.
Okay. Any other discussion on orders number 1189? If you're in favor of orders number 1189, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and ordinance number 1189 moves to second reading.
Ordinance 1190, an ordinance to amend 789 entitled zoning ordinance of the city of Lawrenceburg. This is to make changes to section 5.062, C2 highway service district landscaping provisions. Same requirement to, if an existing parcel is legal nonconforming lot with respect to the maximum, minimum size requirements, a 10-foot landscape strip may be reduced by half. That's for first reading.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve. And a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if you're in favor of orders number 1190, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and ordinance 1190 moves to second reading.
Ordinance 1191, an ordinance to amend 789 entitled zoning ordinance of the city of Lawrenceburg. This is to amend section 5.063, C3 general commercial district landscaping provisions. Same situation. If a legal nonconforming lot with respect to the minimum size requirements, 10-foot landscape strip may be reduced by half. First reading.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if you're in favor of ordinance 1191, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and 1191 moves to second reading.
Ordinance 1192, an ordinance to amend ordinance 789 entitled zoning ordinance of the city of Lawrenceburg. This is to amend section 5.064, C4 neighborhood convenience service district landscaping provisions. Same situation. That's here for first reading.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve. And a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if you're in favor of ordinance 1192, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and ordinance 1192 moves to second reading.
Ordinance 1193, an ordinance to amend 789 entitled zoning ordinance of the city of Lawrenceburg. This is to amend section 5.065, C5 office professional service district landscaping provisions. Same situation. That's here for first reading today.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve. And a second. Any discussion on the ordinance 1193? Seeing none, if you're in favor of ordinance 1193, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I'd like to sign. Ordinance number 1193 moves to second reading.
Ordinance 1194, an ordinance to amend ordinance 789 entitled zoning ordinance of the city of Lawrenceburg. This is to amend section 3.100, accessory use regulations subsection E. Currently, we have a accessory structure requirement not to exceed 600 feet in size or 40% of the total square footage of the principal structure on a lot. The change is not to exceed 60% of the total square footage of a principal structure on such lot. The freestanding is shall be located in the rear yard in regulation of the principal residence on any zone lot. Purpose of this is several accessory buildings exceed 600 square feet. The procedure is to go to the board of zoning appeals. And we're not aware of any time that it's ever been turned down. And so, planning commission recommended going in and making this change. And that's for first reading.
All right, gentlemen, what's your pleasure on orders 1194?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second. We need a discussion on the orders 1194.
There are already some properties in town that have this, possibly, I'd say. Are they grandfathered in?
Don't need more approval.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion on the orders number 1194? Seeing no further discussion, if you're in favor of orders 1194, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and 1194 moves to second reading.
Ordinance 1195 is an ordinance to amend ordinance 789 entitled zoning ordinance of the city of Lawrenceburg. This is to deal with section 4.071 development standards, subsection 2 detailed standards G. This is to delete the following language. Under G, "Well-equipped playgrounds of adequate size and number shall be provided where it is anticipated that children will occupy the premises." The, we have a developer who has come across this requirement, asked the planning commission to basically say that they won't be building the development if this stays in place. I'm not sure why the, this was ever in the zoning ordinance, but it's there, and the planning commission's recommended it be removed. And that's here for your consideration on first reading today.
Motion to approve.
I got a motion to approve.
Second.
And I have a second. Okay, any discussion on this?
Councilor, all we're saying is if you build a development, you don't have to put in a playground.
Correct.
Thank you.
And that's just keeping up for going to the ZBA, right? Because they could appeal that to them, right?
And then we respond to ADA. Playgrounds have to be ADA compliant. We force them to put in a playground for our ordinance, and it's not ADA compliant if you come out and stick with it.
No. Not at all. But I was just, that's fine. All right, any other discussion on the orders number 1195? All right, seeing no further discussion, if you're in favor of orders number 1195, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and 1195 moves to second reading.
Ordinance 1196, zoning ordinance to amend ordinance 789 entitled the zoning ordinance of the city of Lawrenceburg, Tennessee. This is a rezone request. It's property currently owned by Clayton Wilson, living on the east side of Springer Road. It's requested to be changed to R4 from C3. This is here for first reading, and it is based on recommendation of the planning commission.
All right, so, gentlemen, what's your pleasure on the orders number 1196?
Motion to approve.
I got a motion to approve. I have a second. I got a second.
Is this across the street from where we rezoned other property belonging to Wilson some time ago? Do you remember?
Maybe the same property.
That was for yesterday.
Yeah.
We've already done this, haven't we? No. We have, I don't guess that. We did something similar to this.
We did it backwards last time.
Okay.
It's right across the street, though, from the property you rezoned at R4. And so, it'll be facing, it's a 2.11 acre lot, and it goes right across the street. And it's R4 across the street that's about a four-acre strip. That's a long strip, and this is a two-acre parcel right across from that, moving to R4, is the request.
Across Springer.
It's just right, yeah, R4's sitting right on both sides. And if you drive down Springer right now, you'll see there's a place that's been bush hogged out off that larger parcel. It's that place that's been bush hogged and marked and staked, and that's what's coming up in from it. No worries.
All right, I have a motion, a second. Any other discussion on this ordinance? Seeing no further discussion, if you're in favor of ordinance 1196, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that moves to second reading.
Ordinance 1197, an ordinance to amend ordinance 789 entitled the zoning ordinance to the city of Lawrenceburg. This is to rezone property currently owned by James L. and Melissa Brazier on the southwest quadrant of the intersection of Whipper Creek Road and Springer Road. Is to change the zoning from R, to R4 from R2 and R3. That's based on a recommendation, and Planning Commission is here for first reading today.
Gentlemen, want your pleasure on this ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, any discussion on ordinance 1197? All right, seeing no discussion on ordinance 1197, if you're in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and ordinance number 1197 moves to second reading.
Gentlemen, the, all the zoning ordinances will require a public hearing, and based on the publication schedule, it looks like that the public hearing will take place at your second meeting in January, which would be January 26th. Public hearing on all those zoning ordinances will be that day. Resolution for the Board of Mayor and Council to reappoint Letitia Grayson to the Housing Authority Board, that's for your consideration.
Got a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, any discussion on this resolution? Seeing no discussion, if you're in favor of this resolution, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this resolution is approved.
Next gentleman, a resolution of the Board of Mayor and Council to, of the city of Lawrenceburg, to authorize the city manager to establish a Lawrenceburg ADA compliance plan, and that's for your consideration.
Second.
Got a motion to approve, and a second. All right, any discussion on this? Seeing no discussion, if you're in favor of this resolution, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that resolution is approved.
I think that's all my business today, gentlemen. Merry Christmas, too.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, thank you for taking us through that. All right, any other business to come before the city of Lawrenceburg today?
Wish everybody a Merry Christmas and hope God's good to everybody.
Absolutely.
Always remember, if it was not for the birth of our Savior, Jesus Christ, we couldn't have a Christmas. Merry Christmas, stay the best.
Motion to adjourn.
I got a motion to adjourn.
Second.
This needs adjournment.